Compassion as they discuss these important things on the agenda today. Lord, would you be in this place? Would you have your way? We thank you for them. We thank you for your grace and your mercy, Lord. We give this time to you and just pleading for your wisdom in the strong name of Jesus. Amen.
Okay. Thank you, Mike Cosner. We're going to pledge allegiance on three. One, two. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Debbie, how about roll call?
Councilwoman Corumba?
Here.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilwoman Corey?
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Here.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Here.
Number five is approval of the agenda. We added 12B. I hope that's okay with everybody. Number six, mayor's welcome. But thank you all for coming and taking your time. We need your input because we work for you, believe it or not. We try to. And I'm glad you're here tonight. Okay, now a public comment on anything except eight A and 11A. Have any public comments? Moving right along. Okay, number nine, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second there, here?
Second.
Second. Any comments? Vote, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Here.
I mean, I'm sorry.
You heard it.
Aye.
Aye. Councilwoman Purdon?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the enthusiasm. We did skip over one item, item eight A, the zoning hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes. Okay, motion to approve.
Vote.
Second.
Second.
Any comment? Do you want to give a presentation? I think we're ready to vote.
If everyone's read the application and you're ready to...
You guys put a lot of work into this. I know you don't want to...
Mike Fegan, for the record, just to put a few things on the record. It was heard by zoning board on October 18th. They voted unanimously to approve the request. Staff and the applicant are in agreement on the findings and the conditions. And if you want my 57 slide PowerPoint, I'd be happy to do it. Just kidding.
Is there any members...
I was at that hearing and I approved it, too.
Is there any members of the public who have anything on this item?
Car wash?
No.
Okay, here's where you vote.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Okay, now the mayor and council items. I'd like to thank all the people that donated food to us while we were trying to get our feet back on the ground after the storm by putting all that food in us. We didn't have to leave. We could keep on working all day long for, I don't know, 30 days or whatever it was. We really put out... And I never heard a complaint from any of our staff, so I'm really happy with that.
All right. Next item is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida revising section 7.02 compensation plan of the administrative regulations guide providing for severability, conflicts of law, scrivviness errors, and an effective date. As you recall, this was updates that we learned from Irma to ensure that any emergency pay that was given to the staff or to the management during the emergency period would be reimbursable by FEMA.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comment?
Is there any public comment on it?
Do you want to vote?
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
12A.
This is a pretty straightforward item, but it does require your approval. We had a car accident which the city had some damage to some landscaping in our right of way. There is a settlement proposal by the insurance carrier. It is the maximum under the policy, and I am recommending approval.
Recommend approval. Make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any comment on that?
So, the damage was 4,800, and they're offering basically about 800?
Correct.
But it's Florida, and so everything will grow?
Yeah, the driver had the minimum coverage available based on the comparative fault in all the parties, and this is basically what was available for us. It cost us more to chase after him.
Okay. So, it was just, it wasn't any structural damage? It was just trees?
I believe it was only landscaping.
Landscaping. Okay.
Yeah, Laura, the county never even bothers chasing down that guy. I've got all those trees on Hickory Boulevard, and they get run over, and they never even bother chasing down. It's always, somebody stole the car and wrecked the tree, you know, you got an excuse, and you were so lucky to get this.
Yep.
Let's put it that way.
Great, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mayor.
I believe we already have a motion and a second.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, 12B. So, this is...
This one, if you recall, this is a sort of amendment we discussed at a recent meeting at the urging of Vice Mayor Gibson regarding staffing time and the availability and meeting schedules of our advisory boards. So, at that time, there was direction given to go to quarterly meetings, except when there is an impending item such as land use item. So, this is the administrative code amendments to make that go into place, as well as to clean up some older language that we had. If there's any additional guidance you'd like us to consider to move forward, we can start putting those together as well.
And also, to clarify, at the last meeting, there was direction from council that unless it's absolutely necessary for a board to meet right now, we're postponing those regular items till January unless there's a pending item. Of course, that, not including anything that is addition to land use rights, but...
Their chairman, their chairman of the committee can ask to have a meeting if there's a special reason.
They can ask so. The language that we added was that it is, there has to be a need, so it wouldn't be just a meeting for, just to have a meeting. It would have to be some form of time-sensitive matter or something that's...
In this situation, I think there's a demolition permit.
Correct.
That the historic preservation board needs to meet on that, I believe.
Correct. And another example would be the special events committee would have several meetings in preparation for holiday in the park. Or if there's another pending issue, if there's a purchase of a art piece that the art board is looking at, and they have to have a couple of meetings on that. But many of them do meet monthly with, and, you know, and it may not necessarily have a pending time-sensitive issue. It'd be something that the chair and the staff liaison would discuss.
Do you want to vote on this? Mike, you brought it up.
Well, I also wanted to bring up, I know some of the stuff's in the LDC. It's not just in the ordinances and...
Yes, I've been looking at both the tree ordinance, the tree advisory board, and historical preservation board. So, we'll be bringing back clarifications. I want to pull all of those triggers out of the ordinances and put them into a resolution form similar to this. It just makes it easier for us to amend.
And the lighting, right?
Is, I don't know that lighting had a trigger, but what we want to do is there, this does a great deal to clarify rules. Each advisory board sort of hodgepodge over the years. Some have been adopted by ordinance, some have been adopted by resolution. What the ordinances should really deal with is when in the process those boards are integrated into our review, whereas the actual number of members, the composition, how often they meet, and how those meetings get called, that should be uniform across the board. And so, I believe that this covers all of the boards. What it doesn't do is it doesn't, it doesn't adjust any of the powers of the boards at this time. We have been looking at the historical preservation board. So, I know there were some questions about whether those, some of those issues could be resolved on time-sensitive matters by the zoning board. That's going to take a little more involved looking at because we also want to maintain that we have our certification for historic preservation. So, whether we roll their review into a recommendation that gets voted on by the zoning board or it continues to stay with the historic preservation board, we're trying to make sure that it doesn't slow anything down and it all goes as fast.
Because I know the county just streamlined stuff.
Yeah.
Things like that, so...
And we did pull some of this language from the county's regulations.
Okay. Jesse, any comment?
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense to streamline it as much as we can. I mean, essentially solidifying land use issues under one committee makes the most sense to me, so they're not multiple points of entry where they have to get approval here at the tree committee and they have to talk to the historic committee, and then there has to be a vote from us. If we can solidify everything is under zoning or everything is where it's supposed to be under one, I think that's more appropriate for land use issues.
Do you want to vote at this time?
If you want to, if there's more direction, I can, we can look at those issues. We can look at, I know we've talked in the past about combining local planning agency and zoning board. I know we've talked about a lot of these things. Historic preservation is one of those ones that there are, you wouldn't want the historic preservation board because there are certain requirements for their membership to be the zoning board. Right. So, the question is, could, how do we integrate the historic preservation board and any of their involvement into the zoning board without losing our certification? But if you'd like us to look at consolidating everything, I know that the Village of Estero recently did some amendments where they have just one kind of mega board to deal with all land use matters. We can certainly look at that.
Try and consolidate that.
But we do need direction on this specific amendment.
All right, we need a vote on this one.
Which actually brings you to the quarterly meetings.
Then would we add an addendum to solidify onto this one, and then everything's done at once?
Yep. I think that's what, what the attorney's saying is we'll have to bring back, but some of those are by ordinance.
Those, that'll all be by ordinance.
By ordinance, which will have to be...
Motion to approve this and then direction on the rest.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Okay, now we get into flood hazard and 50% rule.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'd like Aida to come forward, our floodplain coordinator, to kind of give you a general review. We're hearing from many of our community and neighboring jurisdictions about them looking at revisions to their ordinances regarding this. I do want to emphasize that we are thick in the process of FEMA reimbursements. We're dealing, we're daily dealing with NFIP, and we want to ensure whatever we do safe holds our community as the level that we have now for the NFIP, which gives everyone that 25% insurance reduction, but understanding that there are going to be challenges met with the 50% rule. So, we thought it was a timely discussion to review with you. This is for you to give us a little bit further direction on what you'd like to see possibly happen with what can be done with our communication with the state, floodplain coordinator, and also FEMA. But it would require, down the road, it would require a review by the LPA and an ordinance back if you wanted to make any changes.
Can I ask a question before it starts?
Yes, Jesse.
They just announced the, yesterday, I believe, that on Tuesday, the county is going to do their 50%. They're going to do a meeting on how 50% is going to be met in the county. How it's met in the county is going to greatly reflect how we do it in the city. So, I'm wondering if it may be more advantageous to see how the county moves on Tuesday and then revisit this with that already known.
Sure. I think...
Not that I don't want to hear it, but I mean...
If, I just think if Aida hits a couple of high points, you have a lot of folks in the community that are asking about this right now and are regularly calling Aida and Pete every day, so it might be good for a little bit of information just to review what we have on the books and at a high level, just so that...
Okay, very good. Thank you. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, or I guess evening at this point. Aida Lonergan, the city's floodplain manager and one of your structural building inspectors. So, specifically focusing on the 50% rule. Benita has been a five-year cumulative community since it's, since 2001, which was actually prior to the National Flood Insurance Program accepting us into their program. With that being said, part of our point qualification system to get us to the level-five community where we are now, that qualifies all residents located in the floodplain, to receive a 25% discount on their flood insurance policy per year, that cumulative piece of the puzzle was that stepping stone to get us to where we are now. That's, that was that trigger point on what made us a class-five. The bottom-line benefits of being that class-five community for our residents, as of October 22nd, we currently have 11,816 FEMA-backed flood insurance policies for Benita Springs residents. Out of the 11,000-plus policies, per-year savings for those residents is $2,318,980. We broke that $2 million mark, and we couldn't be prouder. We strive every permit application, every communication with a resident, every outreach program to maintain that discount savings for our residents. The implications in the long term, should we decide to amend our policy from a five-year cumulative to a one-year cumulative, the difference in our audit would be 20 points. Now, the city has certainly increased its programs and outreach projects, so we can spare 20 points and still maintain a class-five community. That is within reason. As some of you may recall, as post-Irma, when we had such significant wind damage, we actually did adjust the 50% rule to more of a hybrid policy because the quantity of residents whose flood, whose homeowner policies were threatening to drop their coverage if they did not replace their roofs, if they did not upgrade to impact-rated windows. We, the hybrid method included a replacement roof permit to only count for a one-year period of time. If you were upgrading to an impact-rated window or installing hurricane shutters, that scope of work only counted for a one-year period of time. That was to help mitigate and offset the requirements that their insurance companies were imposing on them as compassionately as we could while still complying with the policy. As a safe buffer to cover the point spread, we incorporated a non-conversion agreement at that time for buildings that have enclosed walls below flood. That one document offset the points balance. That's why we could ideally sacrifice this 20 points should we decide to downgrade from a five-year cumulative community. The long-term impacts on what we should consider, we did just revise our flood hazard policy back in August. So, FEMA frowns very heavily on back-to-back amendments, especially post-disaster. This afternoon at 2:00, we had FEMA representatives with the building department. They call very frequently to make sure that we're following procedures, that we're dotting the i's, crossing the t's, as we should, for the best protection of the community. They are very pleased with us, by the way. We've hit all the right check marks. They consider us ahead of schedule for our response in this situation. However, they have already indicated that those communities looking to go immediately post-disaster from a five-year to a per-permit as a response to the hurricane may have complications with the policy. That complication could, worst-case scenario, result in a suspension from the program. Should a community get suspended from the program, FEMA will no longer sell a FEMA-backed flood insurance policy to any resident of that community that's suspended. They will not renew that flood insurance policy. That kind of landlocks any buying and selling if someone's got a mortgage on the property. Most significantly, immediately, it also restricts any disaster funding, grants, and assistance to our residents. So, that's the word of caution. Should we take an extreme to go to a permit-by-permit, we just need to be cautious. As far as the trends that we're seeing now for substantial damage and substantial improvement, the 50% rule, out of the 15 letters of substantial determinations that we've issued as of today, not a single file has been a result of the five-year cumulative program. It's all been based off of this one-day disaster from the hurricane, that that one event broke the threshold. How that plays out in a year's time is to be seen. We do educate each of our residents at that time when they're making the decision for what's best for them and their property, what the implications could be. Obviously, after an event like this, there is typically more assistance available for a property owner to tap into should they wish to pursue coming into compliance with that structure and elevating it.
So, I think at this point, we just wanted to make sure we're giving as much transparency to the public of the process and where we're at. I think it needs to be monitored additionally by what our neighboring jurisdictions are doing and the continued conversations that we'll have with FEMA, but we in no way want to make any of our residents at risk of their assistance or the process of potential funding.
Some people say if you go over to 50%, you got to tear the building down. Is that possible?
Not necessarily. So, what the...
Not necessarily. I love these terms.
Well...
They might do this, and not necessarily, that's...
So, what it means is that there's, the options for the 50% rule, the valuation that we come up with for the structure based off of the property appraiser tax assessment plus 20%, that's their starting number. If they're not happy with that number, they can provide a private appraisal. At this time, I've only had two files that that private appraisal did not give them enough money to work with, but those were significantly impacted buildings. What the, what FEMA and the Florida Building Code states, that if you hit that 50% mark, you must bring your building into current compliance. There's a lot of mechanisms based off of the age of the home, and we, this is a program and things that we work on year-round. We have structures that come into compliance every year and not just after a hurricane. Some of those are as minor as adding a flood vent in the garage and elevating their water heater and AC unit. We have some that are currently seeking, they love their home, they want to keep in compliance, but they're going to turn, they're going to remove the downstairs habitable, non-conforming areas and relocate all living areas to the second floor. That is the method of bringing a home into compliance. You can remove a roof and build a second floor going up. Again, the non-conforming, conforming items on the ground floor is what is of concern and would need to be removed. So, it, there are several options available to property owners. It doesn't necessarily mean they have to start from scratch. That's a decision they make on aesthetics, finances, and based off of their engineer's report on how to meet that compliance.
So, what if the downstairs living quarters were not permitted in the first place? That happens a lot, I think.
It does. We, and we, on our yearly community assistance visits with FEMA, we do answer for those, and they bring anything that has escalated to their level to our attention, and we address those with neighborhood services. And we work with those property owners for compliance, how to mitigate it. In this specific case, based off of the year of construction, we determine whether or not that was a legal or an illegal addition. As they're coming in for a restoration permit, they have to remove those non-conforming and non-permitted items in order to maintain their building's compliance and keep them exempt from the 50% rule. Part of that for the long-term planning for the community, we are having them to complete that non-conversion agreement, which states all of the regulations, that they have read and understand the rules and that they are not going to violate them. That gets recorded with the clerk's office against the deed, so that way it can show up when someone does a public search for when they sell the property to help educate future owners on any restrictions that there may be. It also helps our neighborhood services team on maintaining compliance and holding people accountable to both the Florida Building Code, FEMA's regulations, and the city's flood hazard reduction ordinance.
Okay, Tony.
Well, no, I, Mr. Mayor...
Oh, Tony, get to do all this. Yes, dear.
Okay, thank you. You said non-convergence agreement. What does that mean?
It's a non-conversion, as in they, they're stating that they will not convert that storage and parking area that is legal below flood into an illegal use.
Okay. And then if the county, as Jesse was mentioning, might change into permit-by-permit, can the city still say we'll go for one year?
Yes. The, actually, most municipalities in our area, we have not been consistent for quite some time. We have neighboring communities that are already permit-by-permit and have been for some time now. We have other communities south of us that have been a permit-by-permit for quite some time. Three out of five has been consistently a five-year program. Part of the, looking at that process has been based off of the size of the community. The larger the community, the more areas they had to be able to tap into those audit points to hit that class-five. As a lower, as a smaller community, we don't have massive tracts of open space. We don't have these other larger programs that have been in place for decades. That was part of that driving force for us to maintain that class-five for long-term planning for these residences. Most structures will outlive the people, so that's why FEMA has that in place, that we address it building by building and not person by person.
Could you just clarify what the coastal A-zone, is that akin to our A evacuation zone? Is that completely different?
It is a little different. When we covered our ordinance revisions earlier this year, you heard the term more closely related to a limo line. What that is, is it's a new layer on the FEMA map that will take place in two weeks. On November 17th is when our updated maps go into effect. FEMA has designate, our current map cycle has two different flood zones. A VE zone for velocity that receives wave action. That's wave action in excess of three feet is what meets that designation. Our AE flood zones, that is more indicative of a slow-rising water source, not something that's going to have wave action. FEMA's math has identified, there's an in-between area, and that in-between area, which is now the coastal A-zone that we adopted, is a wave action between 1 and 1/2 and 3 feet as designated on their map. It was already incorporated into the Florida Building Code, so when we saw it on our maps, it was an easy adoption, excuse me, an easy adoption process for us to include it. For long-term planning, it was one of the prerequisites for us to maintain our current CRS rating for that 25% discount. So, we already have the language for that coastal A-zone, so it's a new designation of a flood zone.
Is that generally, though, I want to guess, west of 41?
It is west of 41. There are western sections of Benita Bay that include that line off of Coconut Road for the Spring Creek area and the bay and Gulf areas along Hickory.
Okay. And I noticed that there's quite a bit of language in here about for trailers and manufactured housing, so is that required?
It is. So, again, that was one of the items that the CRS program had modified the prerequisites and said that if you want to say a class-five community, you can no longer allow replacement mobile homes below flood, that they have to meet flood or you lose and go back to a class-10, which offers no discount. So, we did adopt that. So, all replacement, new and replacement manufactured homes do need to meet the current flood requirements.
They have to have an elevation. They can still have them if they're already existing, and I think you had a language that you couldn't put new trailer parks in that zone. Isn't that correct?
Correct. So, current language in that's been in place for quite some time, actually, since the initiation of the program. No expansion of existing areas and no new areas can go in those flood hazard areas. If you've already got it, that's great. You can keep it and maintain it. The adjustment to that was, previously, we allowed a replacement mobile home to go on back below flood, whether it was two feet or six feet. New language requires us to enforce that they be elevated like any traditional structure.
And do we have any, in our land development or building code, requirement for how you elevate them, like the material that could be used for... elevate them, like the material that could be used for-
It is currently covered in the Florida Building Code for Design Standards and cross-reference to ASC E24, which is the engineering standards for flood design.
Okay. Thanks so much. Good job.
Okay.
So Mayor, Council, we're just going to continue to monitor this and bring back updates. And then we'll be, at some point, if we feel there's a recommendation to you all, to send something to the LPA for review or changes, we'll bring that forward.
Okay. Thank you so much. Very good.
This is probably going to be one of the more difficult decisions this council has to make. You know, I know we all want to reach out and help our citizens as best we can. But we have to remember that one of the reasons why this storm is going to be the most costliest storm in U.S. history and in fact, in world history, is because of substandard or non-conforming housing, okay? So the choice you have is going to be, you know, the amount of help you want to provide people, but if that help, in effect, puts them back in the same place with the same structure they had before Ian, then what have you really done in terms of helping people survive the next storm? So, you know, there's no magic answer, but it, you know, we can get lost in the trees, the code and all that. But to me, it comes down to that fundamental question. Do we want a stronger housing community post Ian? Or do we want people to rebuild and be in the same position they were before Ian? So that's, that's going to be, and that's the same political question that the county commission is going to have to wrestle with. You know, they're, they're dealing with the unincorporated areas of Lee County. The cities are, you know, Cape Coral's talking about going to one year. It's, to me, it's sort of a feel-good thing, but then in the long run, what have you really accomplished? So I just wanted to make that clear.
I just might point out, I believe that the governor called for a special session in December. I don't know if the dates have been set yet, but that was to deal with insurance, post Ian. It's very likely that there'll be more changes coming along to deal with the results of this.
Very good, very good. Okay, are we ready for a financial report?
Yes. At this time, Lisa come forward and give us an update. She's also going to be discussing some potential funding sources as well.
Nice picture.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's our logo, yeah.
Thank you all very much. We're here tonight to review the August financial report. It is the fiscal year-to-date report for August, so that's 11 months into our fiscal year. We still, in some cases, we have a couple of months of activity as we collect, most of the monies we collect in October, our fiscal year ends 9/30. Most of the monies we spend or collect in October are applied to the former fiscal year. So therefore, there are a couple of months to go on these data that you see here. Our first schedule, we do show you the same graphs consistently each month. I know they may be a little less exciting, but they do help us clearly identify trends and from year to year. And our composition of our general fund revenue was very important to our financial long-term sustainability. We see here, avalorm taxes, 43%. That will go down a little because we have collected most of those. We typically collect those by November. And the other items continue to take up more of the 100% of the pie shape there. This is the general fund revenue, fiscal year-to-date, August 31st this year as compared to the immediately preceding year. These trends continue to reflect the economic positive conditions that we had up through August. Again, next year, our budgets will reflect a little bit of a dampening of that as we've been guided by The Economist, but so far, so good on this one. General fund expenditures, fiscal year-to-date, August 31st this year, it's immediately compared to the prior year. You will see on almost every category, the expenditures have gone up. These are our general fund, typically our regular recurring operating expenditures. We knew about this. This is a clear result of inflation and other, other things that are happening, you know, nationwide. So not unanticipated, but it's just really good to remember about this trend, and we hope that we'll see this come down. Restricted revenue. We show, again, fiscal year-to-date, August 31st this year, immediately preceding year. We again, we see the same trends we've seen each month, building permit fees. Our reduction, that is set to sunset in January. Y'all will be reviewing that. So we, that was a planned reduction. And then the road impact fees, the other more significant change that we have, again, we're still seeing fiscal year-to-date, we were still seeing larger collections. Again, we're not sure if that's going to continue in our budget next year. We'll reflect that. But we're just happy that that money is now available for our road, road projects going forward. Cash balances. We show the last three fiscal years of cash balances. This is a snapshot in time. So it's a product of receiving funds coming in, some of the funds that the general fund there that's assigned, those are accumulated to fund your capital projects and your operations into the future. Same thing with your road impact fees and your gas funds and our grant funds there. Those are our American Rescue Plan grants that we have been talking about and will be bringing forward to you all to utilize very soon. And these are the remainder. These are restricted revenues, park impact fees, stormwater building fees, and those other funds are our debt funds. So from time to time, those just ebb and flow. This is a, an exciting thing. I'm sure you guys are all aware. We wanted to make sure that everyone was aware. There was a real estate tax executive order. That extended the payment deadline for real estate property taxes on property destroyed or uninhabitable. It's a temporary relief. The relief is through January 1st, 2023. You recall, the original due date is November 30th, so this, this gives someone some time. What's happened is there's been a special session, someone mentioned it earlier, that's being called and has been requested for December, that is scheduled to provide a permanent solution for those structures that are permanently destroyed or uninhabitable. And the last bullet point there, we hope and we know that in this process, we will receive clarification about what the criteria is specifically for the uninhabitable property, because that can be a gray area right now. We just won't clear definition on that. And that will come down from the state to the property appraiser and the tax collector. Yes?
Question. The real estate property taxes for the property destroyer uninhabitable portion, so real estate property tax, so that's what we're doing, the dock stamp essentially, funds are not, that we use for ship, is that different?
Well, this will be our real estate taxes, our avalorm taxes that we pay every year.
So that's not going to touch those at all. Okay.
Yep. So it just should be our avalorm taxes.
Okay.
And we do, I'm not sure, this is going to be statewide. So I have a feeling when they make this decision, something's going to have to happen with respect to, you know, the revenue. We are very fortunate. You see, our revenue is very diversified. We're financially healthy municipality and we're so grateful for that. However, a lot of smaller special districts, such as Independent Fire District or someone of that nature or some of your other special districts, they rely almost 100% on real estate taxes. So we foresee that will be dealt with and handled accordingly. I can't speak to how, I just, I know that that'll be something that they'll look at in their session. The extension of public assistance funding. We received some good news. FEMA extended the time period for the 100% reimbursement for debris removal and emergency protective measures up to 60 days from the start of the incident period. There's an asterisk there, and what we've denoted is there additional time maybe need to be requested for the city. I think our manager wanted to speak about that.
At this point, we'd like some direction. We would like to, on the behalf of the city, the mayor and council, is to draft an appropriate letter to FEMA to lobby for 100% of expenses into 120 days. So at the conclusion of Lisa's items and we go a little bit further into the Hurricane Ian review, that will be something I'd like some direction for, from. And we would coordinate those efforts with our neighboring jurisdictions in Lee County, but specifically to have a letter from mayor and council requesting that 120 days, because we know we will not likely be able to accomplish our, all of our goals in 60 days.
Is there 75% after that or is there any reimbursement after this?
Previously, with Hurricane Irma, there was additional reimbursement, but if we have the opportunity because of the significance of this storm and the magnitude-
Yeah, it's much bigger than ever.
Much bigger than, so we'd like to request that opportunity.
Yeah, that's good.
And historically, FEMA has designated that period to cover pretty much significantly, getting the roads back open, get everything going, get the debris up. So that's what they drive it by. Now, they start out, we start out with our number of days based upon just an average storm. This is obviously much more significant with respect to the amount of work that has been done, and that's when they do go in and make an extension such as you see here. So they're aware of it. So I, I look forward to us making the application if we can.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Do we need a motion on that?
Ms. Greg?
I'd like to ask Lisa what-
Yes, sir.
When do they come up with the new appraised value of the homes and the buildings?
So to give you a little background information, we've been advised that the Lee County property appraiser on every property has attached a new application with a letter. So you can, when you're on your property data page, there is an option to select the tax letter and there is a letter from the property appraiser, and it denotes a market value that's actually to be used for your, potentially for your 50% rule or potentially, you know, other uses. But that's available right now.
And what, where I'm coming from is, a lot of homes are going to be unoccupiable for up to a year. That's got to affect what you expect them to pay for taxes.
Yes, and that's what we talked about.
Their value is going to be less.
Yes, that will be, the decision appears to be made, will be made statewide, and it will give direction to the county, Lee County Property Appraiser.
Question, isn't that going to affect the money we collect for next year?
So, I'm going to, there's nothing that, Lisa can't give you an answer to that? If it, if nothing does change, then the values get assessed as of January 1, 2023.
Right.
So if a home is unoccupiable, they can, and it gets its full assessed value, they can go through the value adjustment board and get that adjusted. That, that January 1st number is sort of the snapshot. Everything gets calculated up through March, and then we start to get the preliminary rules in, you know, April, May. That is what we then base our budget on. Obviously, this is going to be a moving target no matter, no matter what happens. So I think those are the questions that we need to get answered out of the session.
Exactly.
Tax, as I understand it from the governor's letter, the first issue is taxes.
Yes.
But that's probably not revenues. So the tax part is the relief, not the impact on downstream. So that'll be something that we'll-
Yes.
Have to talk with our lobbyists.
Yeah, and the special session appears to be, because the taxes that are due in November, initially November, and now for certain properties extended to January are actually January 1, 2022.
Is there still that discount in November?
Yes, and it appears, from what we read, and again, the session we'll hear, it appears that the only extension are to the ones that are negatively impacted. The remainder of the peoples will have that normally pay in November, they'll pay in November. So.
Yes, Amy. Yes. Laura.
Thank you. Will it be retroactively corrected?
Well, that's what I'm saying. There, the executive order talks about what's due right now, basically this month. And that says of January 1 value. So that will be the revenue that will be collected this year, the taxes that are paid this fiscal year. So it's, the value is January 1, 2022. So you pay your taxes in November for, based on that value. So it will be what's due right now.
Okay, but then when you rebuild and your home is back to-
They'll do it January 1 the next year and what, January 1 the next year. And in this process-
It just starts from that date.
Yes, every year, January 1. And it's an evolving process. And I'm sure, you know, we were talking about what's going to happen with the various, you know, you see, our state's been very proactive and just wonderful with stepping in and trying to give some clear guidance, because it's countywide.
Right.
And they're on the forefront of this, I gather from what we're reading. So we'll just have to kind of wait and see on some of that.
Okay.
Ooh, another question.
Ask a question, please. Anything else? Yes.
Lisa, suppose a home is completely destroyed and, you know, they're paying real estate taxes based on the January 1, 22 assessment. Nothing happens to the property after the storm, because they're trying to figure out what to do. So the appraisal comes in far less. But the property is also homesteaded. So is the 3% rule going to apply in that case if they put a million dollars' worth of improvements on after it's appraised on January 1, 23?
I think that's going to be something that's going to, again, have to be set statewide. The 3%, the homestead is all statewide, and I'm sure they will be addressing those specific things. Because, for example, a homestead is typically someone who lives there. Well, if they lived there before and it goes down to raw land, the raw land, if it stays in that raw land state, theoretically, that could be the value, but how can you reside on raw land? Could be an RV, you know, I mean, to be, I think, I think, you know, it's-
Be determined.
The possibilities are so wide-ranging with every individual situation, every individual need, that may be the only place they have to go, and the RV may be what they decide to do. So I, I think we just have to wait and see. We're aware of it, we're watching it, you know, and we're going to see what the impacts are. Thank y'all for your questions, so.
Anything else?
More slides.
Yeah, more slides, more slides. We just want to let y'all know where the incident date started. It's a little different than what we would think, but they start the incident date a little before the event because you start to prepare. And again, these are some FEMA guidelines that we wanted to make sure we all touched on. We have put in our request for, request for public assistance, which is the initial step in the process. After I developed the slide, we were approved, and there's a grant that was on your agenda tonight, a grant agreement to start that process. So we're moving forward as quickly as we can with the FEMA process. And that's for, the bulk of that will be our debris and any other damage that we receive city, city property.
What was the amount of the grant?
Excuse me, that one actually didn't have an amount yet. It's the initial agreement that you get for your overarching public assistance participation. Financial considerations. The city typically has to expend the funds before FEMA reimburses. Historically, as we all know with Irma, that took quite a bit of time. An exciting thing was just called to everyone's attention. We found out today it was a lesser utilized function of FEMA, and they are reviving it. So there's a potential that exists to receive 50% of estimated cost as an advance for expedited projects. There's specific requirements, one of them is it has to be over a million dollars. Our debris, we feel, will fall into that category. So that will enable us to have cash flow a lot sooner, because the next bullet tells you, in Irma, it was 16 to 19 months from the time we had to pay, and our biggest expense then were the debris removal. So when we paid those huge expenses for debris removal, it took us 16 to 19 months, and that was doing everything as quickly as we could to get that funds back in the bank.
But to clarify, Governor DeSantis provided this program-
Okay.
For Ian. It was not available to the city during Irma.
Thank you for adding that.
So one other thing that we did today is we have put in a request, Brenda put in a request today to this, through the Lee County Emergency Management to the state, for them to provide technical assistance to the city. So we understand that a state employee will come directly to work with Lisa and her staff to help us provide the needed materials to expedite our process. So they said within three to five days, they should be able to respond to that and have the staff available to us. So this is very different than, than Irma was for us, and we're hopeful that some of the estimates that we can get from our contractors, that we can put that together and receive some funding upfront. We know Lee County's already worked through this process and the state has, so we're hopeful that will, that will provide. Again, as Lisa said- we're hopeful that will, that will provide. Again, as Lisa said, there are some, we do have other expenses that will have to go through the typical process because they're not at a million, but close to probably. But the debris is absolutely an expense that we already have clearly over a million dollars' worth of expenses, so.
Very good. Go Navy.
We're very excited about that. As I said, everyone's been so hopeful. We did want to just summarize for everyone, our current level of city reserves, operating reserves four million, disaster reserves two million. Again, we just increased that by a million, so that gives us a total city reserve level at six million. We also wanted to note on the city's unassigned fund balance. This number that's presented here, a little over four million, that was estimated as of September 8. And as we talk, every time we talk about the unassigned fund balance number, it needs to be recalculated based upon our actual collections and our actual expenditures. So it will move. Typically, it does move up a little. We hope so. This year, we have some difference. We have some increasing expenses, and some of our revenues near the end were falling a little, but we'll be watching that, and we'll come back to adjust that for you.
Very good.
We wanted, did want to touch on this. In the event the reimbursement is delayed, additional short-term funding may be necessary. We have reached out to a financial advisor that we've used here at the city before, in the event, for assistance, in the event that we do have to have a short-term line of credit. The last bullet is just outlining the process that we would follow if we do need to do a short-term line of credit. Just as a worst-case scenario, we need to be planning for that. Hopefully, it won't happen, but we would need to request a proposal that could be issued to obtain competitive bids from financial institution for the short-term line of credit. And just so you may all recall, you get a financial advisor. They're an independent, basically, for lack of a better term, kind of a debt broker. They take your terms that you need, your needs, and they go out to the market for you. They draft your request for proposal. They knock on all the doors of all the financial institutions, and they attempt to get you the best, us the best package if we had to go out there. And that's commonly how you go to debt market, particularly with local governments. So we just wanted to be prepared, not alarming anyone, but.
I'd like to make a comment. The banks right now are providing letters of credit, waiving bank fees. Most of them are trying to support the communities in which they have banks. And so I would encourage us to move the process along with setting up a letter of credit, going through the bid process and all that, and not wait until such time as the banks have satisfied their appetite for community support. And we would then be faced with higher fees for setting up the lines of credit. I know that the appetite right now is pretty good. They're offering lines of credit to a lot of HOAs, condo associations, so forth. And it might be prudent to move ahead and see what's available in this market as opposed to waiting three or four months from now and trying to figure it out. So I'm just, I just would encourage it to move that along a little bit, to see if we can take advantage of the current atmosphere with the banks.
Yep. We have, like I said, we have reached out to our financial advisor, which is the first step, and we'll be having discussions with the advisor, talking about what she's seeing, and see if they're seeing that for different municipalities, and we'll be coming back to you all.
I think the next meeting, we're going to have an additional update, but if you're asking to pursue that, that right now, the letter, I think if you had a motion to-
Well, I'll make a motion that-
I'll second it.
Second.
What's the motion? To pursue the letter of credit to sort of get the process going now as opposed to later.
Would, just to be clear, it would be a short-term line of credit, yeah, line of credit.
And there's a second from Fred.
In case we need it.
Yeah, in case we need it. Anything to vote?
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye, but we'll discuss it before that.
Correct. Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilman Corey?
Absolutely, yes. I have another question.
Of course.
But it comes to the financial considerations. It's my understanding that the county is contracted with Crowder Golf up in the, on Fort Myers Beach, obviously, because the Estero Boulevard and Hickory Island and so forth is a county road. And they are picking up trash in the mangroves, the debris in the mangroves. But I understand that they're not doing it on Hickory Boulevard as it crosses into Benita Springs. Is my understanding incorrect, or is that, is there something more to the story?
When you, are you talking about Hickory Boulevard in Benita Springs, the county road? No, I think they're actually going to collect trash that's along the mangrove.
Mangroves?
Yes.
Okay.
To some extent, you know, but yes, I do believe they will be doing that.
Okay. Now, I also note that they're sifting the sand on Fort Myers Beach, and that does a couple, three things. It lightens up the sand, it clears the debris, and it's my understanding that in that process, they also deal with, it helps by sunlight or whatever to reduce the level of bacteria that's in that sand. Do they have similar plans for sifting Benita Beach?
They're sifting sand on the north end of Benita Beach right now.
Currently.
Currently, okay.
Have been for maybe about a week.
Okay. I wasn't aware of it. I just wanted to ask.
If you don't know it, you'd drive right by it, you wouldn't see it.
Anything else? Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, update?
Hurricane Ian. So I do have a few things to go through, and then I think Matt's going to give you a brief update on the debris removal. But one of the items I would like some direction from, I don't need necessarily a vote, but just to, we wanted to recognize that Pasco County Sheriff's Office did head back home yesterday, and they also were greatly helped by Hollywood PD, who's already headed home as well. If it would be the pleasure of the council, we'd like to draft a letter from the mayor and council with gratitude to both of those departments, and then at a later date, that's convenient to them, to provide them to come back for official recognition and some city pins to thank them for their service. I know members of the community already had done that on Hickory Island, so we wanted to have official recognition here. And then I think I saw, I don't necessarily need a vote, but I think I saw that there was an interest in us providing a letter for lobbying of the appropriate, to the appropriate organization with copying our legislative delegation on requesting that FEMA extend that to 120 days, 100% reimbursement. Correct.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep. I did want to also advise you all that we've been notified that Lee County is setting up the Local Mitigation Strategy Committee as well. If you, if some of you recall during Irma, at the time Carl, myself, Matt, and Ellie were a part of that process. This requires us to rank our projects. If you remember, a home buyout was our number one priority, the Dean Quinn Imperial Infrastructure Programs. It also included the Spring Creek Restoration Program, which included the golf course. It also included Pine Lake Preserve. So, so in essence, there will be a new pot of federal funding that gets distributed throughout the county. All the projects become ranked. And I do understand it's going to have to be geographically centric.
So we did, we recently brought a list to update, you know, because some of these Arlene mentioned are already underway, they're already funded, or they're, some of them are complete at Pine Lake. But we did update it, I don't know, six months ago through council, where we added some, I think it was an elevation project in the Imperial Quinn neighborhood, and buyout is still on there, a home buyout. But it is tied to the geographic location. So if, you know, you might want to think, and we'll bring back some ideas, but, you know, maybe some buyout or elevation-type program for the areas that were affected by storm surge, kind of to Councilman Corey's point about, you know, putting folks back in harm's way versus trying to help them out. I think that's the line of thinking that we have, but we can't just add on to what we already have on the list. We would need to, you know, define some areas there.
So, so we will need to bring back a list for your consideration to the next meeting because they'll be asking for us to provide that list in advance. There can be some tweaking before the December 19 meeting, but we'll want to go fully, fully armed with our list so that we can lobby, you know, for ranking as best we can. So. We also wanted to, going on Councilman Corey's question, is to let you know that we are petitioning the state to assist with debris, debris removal in all of the waterways. So at first, we had heard for sure the state was, was going to be dealing with vessels and, and vehicles, real, actual real properties. But then we have a significant amount of debris in the mangrove, so we're, we're working through that process. We've actually been in contact with, with the state yesterday as well. And as Lisa went over, we're also working through the expedited process. We did put in that request today for technical assistance, and we understand they're supposed to be responding to us within three to five days.
That's due to state rather than the federal government, the funding for-
Well, all of the funding is federal government. The city is always, always a sub-recipient of the state. So the federal government provides the funding to the state, which distributes it to the local jurisdictions. Once we get into recovery, we'll have a direct contract with FEMA and our contact, we will have a FEMA contact as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Another Ian-related item is that we did want to remind everyone that the actual, the American Legion and had requested, and they had contacted our staff and Councilmember McCrumba, that they had, they have significant damage due to Ian. Understand they're working on some replacement of the memorial flags, and they had asked that we not have the official service at Riverside Park. They just are trying to do all their efforts to the community where they're located. But Laura and her team are going to look at ways to recognize veterans on Veterans Day, as we did during COVID, and some announcements and other things we're going to do to work on, to keep, to keep remembrance of the day as well. And then the other items, I'll let you kind of give an update on debris.
Well, I do want to start, Arlene talked about, we've been on a couple of really positive phone calls with the state, you know, with some of these larger issues like the waterway debris. And we're, they've really been helping not only ourselves, but Lee County and the local community. So it's, it's very refreshing to see the level of effort that they've been bringing to the community, and I think that some of those are going to, they're really going to help us. But as far as debris, we've moved 163,000 cubic yards of trash. That includes vegetation and flood damage, which is, this storm is very significant in terms of flood damage, really. That's, that's what the driver is. 163,000 yards, that's somewhere around, if you imagine the size of a refrigerator, just the physical size, something like 74,000 refrigerators' worth of trash has been picked up off the streets, to give you an idea.
And what are we going to be able to do with that?
It is going to a site off of Coconut Road, as we mentioned before. Some of it has started to be hauled out this weekend, I believe we started, or maybe it was Monday, hauling it out to the landfill, the demolition debris, the flood debris. And then the vegetation is being ground on-site and then hauled off as well. In addition, what's happened over the last couple of weeks, you may see a, in some of the communities, there's been either a trailer with some sides or a white box truck. It's picking up white goods, refrigerators, anything with refrigerant in it, because the refrigerant has to be evacuated. So they've been working on that as well, and it's, it's collecting as well in the area. But they have to, you know, do the appropriate things so we don't have any environmental issues with refrigerant escaping in the air.
The garbage people, are they picking up horticultural stuff yet?
No, they, they won't pick up. Once, once you get into a disaster like this, the, all the horticulture for a period of time is picked up by the disaster folks and not by your standard waste folks. They, they end up kind of focusing on the household waste, the garbage, that thing, sort of thing, and they leave the big stuff for the debris haulers.
Do we get reimbursed somehow for that? Don't they get paid to haul it?
I don't manage that contract. It's a Lee County contract. It's a pass-through for us. You, I don't know.
Okay. I'm just curious, because they don't seem to be picking it up.
Yeah. I know when a storm comes, they explicitly can't pick it up. It goes into the hands of-
A lot of it. I mean, there's a lot of it. Sure is. Thank you.
Matt? Just a few other quick updates as well, is just to remind everyone, we do only have one polling location within the city. It is located at 25987 South Tameu Trail. That's Benita Commons. So early voting is still available through the election, and is, again, do not go to your normal precinct. That is the only location to vote in person unless you did vote by mail. We wanted to remind everyone that the Evaluation and Appraisal Review Survey is, is live right now. It's, there'll also be an e-blast on that as well, and that's through mid-December. As a reminder, you should have all received a copy of the lobbying, the lobbying request for proposals, which is due November 30. At this time, there should be no communication by potential respondents to any of council members. If they have specific questions, they can do so in writing, and we would issue an addendum that all respondents could be privy to any questions in that as well. And then also, we just remind everyone that this Friday night, the Village of Estero and the City of Benita Springs are cosponsors in the Jaws versus Claws, and, and any proceeds from that event or fundraising efforts will directly be given to teachers and employees that were impacted, within our jurisdictions that were impacted by Hurricane, by Hurricane Ian.
Very good.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions from Matt.
Sure, go ahead. Matt?
Do you have any idea, like, how much more we have out of 163,000? Do we have an estimate of how much we have in total?
I, you know, I have some numbers in my head, and I've had some discussions, but I would really like to, to get an updated estimate from our debris contractor. They had some estimates very early on. I don't think we're going to be as high as that number. And they, you know, I'd like to refrain from that. I think we're, we're, we're making very good progress in the removal of the debris. If you, and it is a slow process. The flood debris does not, you know, tree limbs are a function of how quickly you can cut them up and get them out to your yard, and how much space you have in your yard to be picked up. But once they come through, you know, there's quite a bit of relief. The flood debris, you know, is a function of how much space you have in your yard and how much damage was in your home. And so only a certain amount can come out. It's, it's labor-intensive to remove, it's labor-intensive to pick up. So it's a slow process. But I was just driving some of the, the areas on the approaches to the beach this morning, and in some of the streets that have had mountains of debris, and they've been picked up for weeks now, you're starting to see it really fall off. And I think in the next couple of weeks, it's, it's going to fall off, and by the next council meeting, the number I would give you would be far more accurate than, than what I would throw out at you, and, and be a much more, a tighter number.
And, and I know you said this is going to a landfill, but where is the landfill? Are you allowed to say that?
Henry County.
China.
Well, you know, I know about what the, what the mayor said. I, you know, I've been a lot of places in the county, and I have not, I think I've driven by it once. The Lee County landfill is actually, I believe it's out on 82, or 80, near, well, near, near the Henry County line. It's, it's near where the C-43 reservoir is, I believe. But I've not laid my eyes on it, but that's mostly where, where the stuff will be going.
And that would be like, I'm just curious, will that be a permanent location or the-
Yes, yeah. Once it goes, the, the storm debris is, you know, that's, that's the end of it. The mulch may go to some places. There's, there are folks that actually make that stuff into soil. Some of our stuff from Irma went to a location like that where they, they build, they build dirt out of it. I don't know that for sure that's where, where this will go, but it may, the mulch from the trees may go to various places.
Just one more question. I was confused about some of the FEMA reporting where they, or some, I think it was from FEMA, we got a notice that they were considering removal of debris from private, and I don't understand what that is.
So one of the, so, the simplest way to put it, you know, I mentioned, when you put storm debris out, it's a function of how much yard space. It's a function of how much right-of-way you have. The, the regular storm- much right-of-way you have. The, the regular storm response at FEMA, FEMA's really kind of like an insurance company reimbursing us. There's a lot of rules. We have to pay a monitoring company to monitor our, our folks and make sure we don't break those rules. And, and they're really driven around what's public space and what's private space. So, any of the communities that we've been in, we need rights of entry. We need their insurance documents, because we're, we're really on private property. But the thing you're reading about or hearing about, the state is taking that mission on for the city, as well as, I believe, for the county and, and most of the other municipalities. And that is, the, it's called private property debris removal. In some cases, it's commercial property. They're standing up a website that folks will have to register and request it on. But, and I'm, I'm oversimplifying this, but it's, it's the concept that, you know, you can't, your home is 100, 90% destroyed. It needs to be still demolished, the remaining piece. You don't have the, the means to do so and, or the ability. As long as you work through this process and FEMA has authorized it, they don't always authorize it for storms. Most times they don't authorize it. It's kind of unprecedented that they've authorized both commercial and private property programs. But as long as you file this, follow this kind of really draconian request process that the state is working to really streamline, they can go on demolish it and haul it off of your property. What is involved, you have to divulge your insurance, because if there's any benefit there, they, they probably have to go and, and get it. If you received any proceeds, you'll be handing those over to the state. Rights of entry, indemnifications. So it's, it's a, it's a labor-intensive process where it's, I don't know that we'll have a lot of that here in the city. I think our neighbors to the north are, are going to be faced with a lot of those situations. And the idea is that it gets a home site clear, you know, if you're still going to live there, like Aida was talking about in a, say, a FEMA trailer, it, you know, it helps people recover.
But you have to register a specific property to do that, and you have to get provision before?
Yes, it is.
Then maybe somebody, they will hire somebody to come and do?
The, the state is already working on that. They, I believe they already closed the bids, and, and they already asked us whether we wanted them to take on that mission in the city, should it, should it arise. And the answer was obviously yes, which means we, we don't have to be involved in the, the administration of that, because it is a very, it's something that doesn't happen all the time. I think it hasn't happened in 20 years, is what they were saying on the last phone call. So, to give you, you know, all the storms that have happened in 20 years, FEMA really hasn't opened this program up the, the way that it's been opened with, within the state of Florida here in Lee County.
And then, and just one for Arlene. Do we have any reporting of any kind about any human needs, you know, like homelessness or anything? Do we have any from our care agencies at all? No, what, what our people are, aside from losing their homes, but I mean?
Sure. No, I, I, I do understand that our nonprofit, local nonprofits have been basically working 24/7 and with a lot of outreach. So, no, none of them have reached out directly to the city at this point, but we are referring residents or those in need that need that assistance to, to those folks, as well as Lee County's Human and Veteran Services, because there'll be programs. Additionally, I understand that there'll be an application process through ship funds that the, that Lee County receives that they're including all the municipalities in there. So there's more information for that to come as well. And then we've been working through the process. We've been asked to look at our building codes of allowing the temporary FEMA homes, you know, existing in the neighborhoods that, so people can live near their schools, near their job, and not be, have to be in a particular FEMA village or anything like that. So we're going to be reviewing those as well. So those are going to be case-by-case basis as well. So.
Thank you very much.
All right, Matt. About Coconut Road, is this kind of a special thing? Is Lee County, City, Village of Astero, all the same debris trucks go down that road, or?
Well, you've got all three. It, you know.
I got a call from the Hyatt Regency is why.
Yeah, well, Coconut Road is obviously, you know, are you talking about the land, the, the temporary site where the debris is? That is outside of the city, so it's, it's in the Village of Astero.
Yeah.
There's, the, the site is used by three entities, the city, the county, and the village.
I'm talking about by the Hyatt Regency.
Yep.
Yeah.
They're, they're picking up trash on Coconut Road?
Yeah, that would be the, the county or the village.
Okay, so I told him, is it called a village? Because it's not, none of that road is ours.
Is it commercial property that they have the debris on?
Well, there's a guy from the Hyatt Regency, the manager of the Hyatt Regency was telling me, asked me about it. He was going to open up his hotel.
Why don't we just follow up with him from the staff level?
Yeah.
When he gets reached out to him.
Sure.
What was that?
Have, we'll just have them reach out to, to him and find out everything he needed. Staff will.
Anyway, I told him it's called a village.
Okay.
They got something to do with it in the county, and we don't own any of Coconut.
No, we do not.
Okay. Anything else? I'm getting so high of information. You all listening to this? Yeah, it looks like you're paying attention. Very good. Anything else, Arlene?
No, that concludes my report.
Okay, mayor and council reports. I'd like to, yes?
I just want to reiterate what I, some of the things that I pointed out at our last meeting, to thank everyone who is working so diligently. I personally have interacted with a number of our staff, and they're probably tired of hearing from me, but they are always been responsive, and they always help me to try to fix some things. I know it's impossible to fix a lot of these things, but we are so fortunate to have our staff and, and to have our, our city sticking together to help each other. So I just appreciate it so much.
Okay, I'd like to chime in. You got anything over here?
Yeah.
Fred?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think at the last meeting I brought up about giving some proper recognition to people that have gone beyond, the, the one group that comes to mind is the 114 people that did two loads of laundry a day for, for free for some of the visiting power line companies and all that. I think, I, I want to get them all honored. So what I'm thinking about proposing to council, we would host something at our clubhouse, because there's 114 people. That would fill this whole room up. I'm going to ask our link to congressmen to see that some appropriate person from the office could be Byron, it may be somebody else, but they would be there in between, maybe they could come up with a certificate, and the city would have one, and we'd pass out. Mayor could be there, or Mike Gibson, and, and it'll be at Hunter's Ridge, so there'll be no cost to, to the city. And there's another group, which has probably got maybe a dozen people, but they've been driving all over Bonita Springs and as far up into Fort Myers, handing out water and MREs and fresh bananas for a long, long time, and I think they should be recognized too. So is that okay? Does anybody have a problem with that? Because I don't see a way of doing it in here.
Fred, I don't have any problem doing it, but I'd be concerned that we're leaving people out. We should have like a nomination system to, because I'm sure there are other heroes, silent heroes.
Well, I'm sure there is, but I'm, I'm taking care of the ones I know about. If you want to take care of some, have something.
But I think we should, are you against asking people to give information in, in that regard?
If they want to, I'm taking care of ones that I know. If there's another group, there's, there's one that I know the guy that put it together does not want any publicity on, but once the election's over, I think that'll change. That, that truck, truck line that went along between Fort Lauderdale and here to supply the Bonita Assistance Office.
This is your project, right, Fred?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna, it's, I'm gonna get it done and the-
You're gonna use your clubhouse?
Yeah, right, yeah. But you're all invited to come, ain't ya?
Oh, sure, sure. I appreciate that. That's good.
And if, and if, Amy, if there's somebody you know of, another group, we can-
I don't know. I just would, the city should ask for recommendations at large for people who they recognized did a special effort during the, the crisis that we're in. I mean, that's, and then we don't, we don't have to particularly see them individually, but maybe send out letters of recognition to the people. I think there are lots of people that helped. That's, I mean, I, I don't, that's not to diminish the work that's been suggested by Fred, and, and to have a nice party is really good. Thank you for doing that. But there's other, I'm certain there are other people that have helped in very individual and personalized way. And I, I don't think we should ignore them.
No, I would agree with you.
What we can do is, let us work with the communications department, and then previously what we did with COVID, if you remember, we, we did some special recognitions to our nurses, to our firefighters, to police, and generally the community. So we might be able to come up with some program in general as well. But if there's someone specific anyone wants us to bring back, we can.
When are we going to do this, Fred?
Well.
Can you come up with a date?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let everybody know, and I, I'll probably give you options of two or three different dates. That way, if one doesn't work for somebody that really wants to be there, then we can go to one of the alternate dates.
Okay.
And we may not-
Going back to us.
Yeah. And we're not, we may not do this for a week or two, because the, it just needs to happen for anything we know about. And probably by doing this, we'll find out about other things that need to be recognized.
Yes, Ara.
And Laura. I want to thank Laura Taylor and Carissa for a terrific pre-Halloween party. I mean, downtown in Riverside, the, the people were so happy. And it was family-friendly, face painting, and it was really enjoyable, and most people were very, very, very grateful. We have coming up our holiday in the park, so that'll be advertised, and our annual holiday lighting. But on November 13th, the Rotary is doing a humanitarian music concert at the Riverside for all, and that's from 2 to 7. So it's free and just to sort of come together as a community. And I have to again, just give gratitude and thanks for Governor DeSantis. Where would we be without him, I swear, and his lovely and beautiful wife who is continuing to help with the mental health issues of our young, and not so young, and really getting out there and making a difference. So, thank you, Governor and Mrs. Lady DeSantis.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah. You know, included in our packets this evening was what I thought was a very well-written public comment from Kyle Moran, who's in the audience tonight, concerning downtown. We, we, at our last meeting, we made a historical decision to move ahead with the Baron Collier Concept Plan and the lease agreement covering the bamboo property. And I have felt personally for some period of time, much along what Kyle described, that we do need to do some things going forward with the, making downtown more pedestrian-friendly, and trying to get, adopt some way in which we can get some of the large truck traffic out of downtown along US 41. And as I look at what was suggested, there are like, you know, four different exceptions about those trucks. You know, if somebody lives downtown, if those trucks are servicing local businesses and so forth. It makes a lot of sense. But I'm just encouraging us to think about that. It seems like as we move forward with the, the lease and the project, we need to continue to improve downtown in a way in which, once we get those people downtown, that we're wanting to make it an active downtown, that it's done, that we've turned the place into what I consider to be a more pedestrian-friendly, less noisy area from truck traffic and so forth. I also think that there are situations downtown where certain businesses are sort of repeat offenders with respect to code violations. And so I think we do need to step up our efforts in that. So, those are my comments. I, you know, I thank Kyle for his, his well-thought-out letter, and, you know, I would hope that, you know, whether it's current council or the new council coming on, that we take some serious steps in terms of trying to address that matter.
Okay, Mike, do you have anything?
Thanks.
Jesse?
Yeah, just a few things real quick. As far as that downtown walkability stuff goes, I'm definitely open to hearing more about it. I, I mean, I've always envisioned it being a bikeable, walkable, pedestrian-friendly downtown. However, I, the only thing that, you know, when this first came up, I, I don't want to hamstring our businesses, so there, there's got to be kind of a, a fine line in how we can do that. But I think holistically talking about what that might look like is actually a good idea. So, on a personal level, I wanted to do this last month, or last week, and I forgot to do it. And I wanted to recognize Mike Gibson for being one of my best friends, because I was, in my other hat, I run the congressional district for Congressman Donalds. I was in Collier County in a helicopter. I had almost no service, and I had like two seconds to call somebody, and I called Mike Gibson. And my son and my girlfriend were in a flat tire, two days after the storm, no gas kind of scenario. They were scared. I can't do anything. I'm in a helicopter. I'm going to be up there for the next hour and a half. I had one call, one lifeline, and it was to him, and he was there, and it was changed in under 15 minutes. You know, I already got back and it was taken care of. So, you know, I just, you're, you're an awesome guy. I appreciate you. And I only have two more meetings with you. So, I want to enjoy them, and I wanted to get a little bit of the Mike Gibson that I get to see out there to people who don't really get to see it, because you're so quiet.
Amy just said better than AAA.
Yeah, so I was tripping AAA, right? Then additionally, from the federal side of it, as far as the 120 letter, 120 days ago, I was talking to the congressman this morning about this, actually. We have a letter that is signed by the entire congressional delegation, the state of Florida, and both senators, that will go out probably tomorrow, requesting for the full 120. Part of the holdup on that, we're in what, day 34, I think now, part of the holdup was essentially the governor's office is doing it in more bite-sized pieces. I think we'll eventually get to the same number, but strategically, they're doing bite-size. I think we're going to do the full ask for 120, just because at the end of the day, the federal side of it is just holding the bag. So, we want to get the 120 on the record as soon as we can. And now we have, you know, everybody on board. So congressionally, I think, you know, we will get the 120, I'm hopeful. So, as soon as I get the actual letter finalized, I'll get it to you guys right away, so you'll see it. Okay? And then tomorrow morning, if there are people in, probably if you live on the beach in Bonita, maybe, and you were affected, for the rest, it may be a little far, but if you feel like traveling, tomorrow morning, get your pens ready. I'll give you a second. 8:30 till 10:00 in the morning, in Fort Myers Beach, we will have the congressman, Rep. Batana, some folks from the banking industry, SBA, NFIP, which is National Flood Insurance Program, and some others who are going to be there to help specifically, you know, people who are still seeking answers, and also businesses who are now trying to pick up the pieces. So that will be tomorrow morning. I'm not encouraging all of Bonita to go. This is a Fort Myers Beach event, but if, if you're in the northern part of Bonita Springs, we'd love to have you. Next Tuesday, as I said earlier, if people are stuck in that 50% rule issue, you know, pay attention. It's going to be live on the county website, and we can, I think I got a flyer from Commissioner, I'll send it to you, send out to Commissioner, Post or whatever. But short version is, on Tuesday at 9:30 AM, the county is going to be hosting their 50% meeting. At this meeting, they're going to discuss updates to the county flood regulations, so they can provide property owners with more options under FEMA's 50% rule. That is a big bearing for us and pretty much everybody else in Lee County. So, you can go to that live in person, or you can also watch that online. I think that's all I've got. Oh, as far as the congressional letter goes, for the people who are doing laundry, yes, just give me the details. Thank you.
Laura, you have anything?
No, she didn't.
You're done, you're done, okay.
You forgot?
All right. Okay, folks, it's your turn to vote. I got to put up three people up here. Out of six, three of- here. Out of six, three of them could be different next time. So, it's your decision. I don't have to put up with them or work with them. So, please vote, please vote. It's your constitutional duty to vote as an American. So, that's all I got to say. Do we have anything else? Public comment? Do we have any public comment now? If not, we just, oh, okay, Kyle. That's a very nice letter you wrote.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You've got such a good education at Warfaron.
Yeah, I appreciate and admire a lot of what folks in the city have done in response to this hurricane. It's just such an unspeakable disaster that we all suffered. And to think too, that we had people on staff, including our own city manager, and I don't think there's a finer city manager in the area, who incurred significant personal damage, but has really risen to the occasion, exceeded all expectations in a disaster that unfortunately exceeded our white worst nightmare. So, you know, and you can see the response in the community. But seeing, you know, what's happening in these chambers with the talks by Aida Williams and Lisa Robson, and understanding just the tremendous efforts that are executed in our city by people that wear multiple hats, people that have multiple jobs for our city, an assistant city manager that's head of public work, say, head of neighborhood services who's head of disaster management. It's, you know, pretty incredible, and I hope people in our city really realize how lucky we are. And I also think it's appropriate to thank you and staff for continuing to keep the eye on the ball in the downtown revitalization effort with that very important vote at the last meeting. In some ways, it may be one of the most important votes that we ever make in this city, to really push forward with the massive investment that we've made there, and the important goal that we have of creating a great destination for our entire city. And so, thank you for that too. It's just a miracle that with all the other distractions, the staff and the applicant and the city council were able to keep their eye on the ball. And we need to continue to keep our eye on the ball too. As Councilman Corey Appleby said, I think there, to make the place a great destination, you need to make it friendly for pedestrians and bicyclers. A speaker at our last meeting talked about how he used to pick up the bus on Old 41, when it was the only north-south in our city. Now, it's joined by US 41, I-75, Imperial Livingston, and you can argue even Logan and things. So, now that this is our, the unique area of our city that is for pedestrians, I think there's a great balance. And I agree with what Councilman Peron said too, about making sure that the balance is struck between serving businesses and serving citizens that need trucks into that area, as well as protecting our pedestrians, our childrens, our biker, our children and bikers and things. But, I think there, you know, thankfully, we're not recreating the wheel here. There are a lot of great examples to pick from, and there are real common sense exceptions in local deliveries and local repairs, and living there and having a commercial a lot there, for instance. I think it's also important to realize that there's some obvious code enforcement issues there. And it's just sort of madness for us to be investing so much of public taxpayer resources down there, and then overlooking, you know, some of these obvious issues. We have other priorities today as we recover from this hurricane, but I think we've got to keep our eye on the ball. You've done that exceptionally well, and I thank all of you for that and everything that you do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, thank you.
Any more public comment? Alex? See Alex Grant in the back. Are you coming up? Yeah, here he comes.
Yes, Alex Grant, 11-851 East Terry Street, former city councilman here. And basically, I don't know if you read the last issue of Time Magazine that came out last weekend, that was on climate change that really affects this southwest Florida area, as well as the United States. Another thing is, I'm a member of the American Chemical Society, and the latest publication, this was, if you want, I can make a copy for you, Water Worries About Climate Change and Scientists Study How Droughts, Etc. affect inland waterways. So, I have that in case anybody wants that. Also, I saw the Everglades Wonder Gardens last Sunday, the Halloween thing, and that northern portion of the 5.27 acres, it was filled with cars, with kids and their parents going across the street for the Everglades Wonder Gardens Halloween Day. That was last Sunday. So, pedestrian-friendly, Old 41 is very important. And so, I wanted to emphasize that. And also, now, I'm going to speak as my, put my fire hat on. As you may know, that I had been a volunteer, in fact, I was the last volunteer with Benita Springs Fire and Rescue for at least nine years. I was the first hazmat person because of my chemistry degree from UNC Chapel Hill, and my master's in soil chemistry from NC State. So, I want to say also that when I was a city council member during Hurricanes Charlie and Wilma, myself and the second mayor we had, Mr. J. Rand, and myself, and the fire chief, were a committee of three that looked at the city during those two hurricanes. And I went through, on both occasions, through every city, every street in my city council district, District 2. And anyway, I have never seen such damage in a hurricane in my 62 years as a resident of Benita Springs and eastern North Carolina. This one took what's the worst, I think, than Hurricane Donna in 1960. Anybody, were anybody killed in Benita, do you know? If not, well, somebody was looking after this.
The good Lord took care of us.
The good Lord, exactly.
Okay, anything else? We're adjourned.